Stand for the flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, the which it stands, one nation, dear God, indivisible.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners' public meeting Tuesday, May 19, 2015. The time is now 7:55. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, notice of this meeting was published in the December 11, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted in the Nutley Sun, a copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Deputy Mayor Evans will be presiding over the meeting tonight. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, mayor, except for Mayor Petracco.
Minutes.
Tonight we have April 7, 2015 executive session minutes for the Board of Ed and Board of Commissioners' joint meeting, the April 7, 2015 executive session minutes, and the April 21, 2015 executive session minutes. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
We also have April 21, 2015 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Thank you. We don't have any communications, correspondence, or proclamations, reports. Commissioner Scarpelli?
I have monthly progress reports, mayor, for right.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for March of 2015.
Bills?
Bills for tonight. Public affairs, $2,7,562.29. Revenue and finance, $2,361,082.73. Public safety, $19,596.49. Public works, $91,051.64. Parks and public property, $66,740.86. Total payroll, $772,607.76, for a grand total of $3,518,605.77.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
So Commissioner Tucci, we have some special recognition tonight?
Yes, we do, mayor. This evening, we have the honor and the privilege of commending five young men who have attained the Eagle Scout rank in advancement and have done some wonderful community projects. So what I'd like to do is read this resolution, and then I'll move to consolidate all five because the body of the resolution is similar, except for what the individuals have accomplished and what they've contributed to their communities. And I'll begin as follows. Whereas to earn the Eagle Scout rank, the highest advancement rank in scouting, a Boy Scout must fulfill requirements in the areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. And whereas although many options are available to demonstrate proficiency in these areas, a number of specific requirements are necessary to advance through the ranks: tenderfoot, second class, first class, star, life, and eagle. And whereas to advance, a Boy Scout must pass specific tests that are organized by requirements and merit badges. And whereas at each of his rank advancements, a Boy Scout takes part in a Scout Master Conference, and beginning with the Star rank and continuing through Life and Eagle, a Scout must demonstrate participation in increasingly more responsible service projects. And whereas the first Scout learns, second, the Scout is tested, third, the Scout is reviewed, and fourth, the Scout is recognized, and the final step in advancement involves presentation of the badge at a ceremony before the entire troop. And whereas, and we'll start with this young man, Rudolph Albert Meglio achieved Eagle Scout rank upon completion of his Eagle project of removing and erecting a log fire ring seating area suited for 120 campers, and then dug and rebuilt the fire ring, as well as a stone memory garden at Fairview Lake's YMCA camp. And whereas Maxwell Joseph Meglio achieved Eagle Scout rank upon completion of his Eagle project of repainting the walls and resurfacing the floors at the Nutley Volunteer Emergency Rescue Squad, as well as finishing the volunteers with 12, furnishing, rather, the volunteers with 12 new comforters for their beds. And whereas Andre John Benitez achieved Eagle Scout rank upon completion of his Eagle project of repairing and repainting three classrooms in his church where children go for their Sunday School lessons, and the church hosts IHN families. And whereas Dante Esteban Nunez achieved Eagle Scout rank upon completion of his Eagle project of refinishing and outbuilding a church cemetery, clearing debris and installing a barrier fence to prevent animals from nesting under the building, and planting a tree in preacher's circle. And whereas Ian Carson Lavelle achieved Eagle Scout rank upon completion of his Eagle project of renovating a nature cabin at Camp Ahida? Am I saying that correctly? Okay, I got a nod there. For diabetic children, removed all existing items, cleaned and rebuilt workstations, displays, bookshelves, and cabinets. He also sanded and varnished the wood floors, painted and decorated the walls. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey congratulate and commend all of these individuals on achievement in completing their Eagle Scout Court of Honor, and extends their best wishes for continued success. I move to consolidate and advance the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Before I vote, I'd just like to note that I know the work you put into this. You're the future of this country. I really hope to God that many people, many young people, follow you as great role models. Thank you for what you've done for your school district, this township, the organization belong to. I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
Before I vote, I'd just like to thank you once again for all of your efforts. You're a bunch of young men to be looked up to. What you've done is very admirable for your community, and in today's world, we need more youngsters like you. I very proudly vote yes.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
So I would add my comments as well. One of the wonderful things about scouting is it builds leaders, and it's about leadership. So to go through the process of becoming an Eagle Scout, which less than 2% of all scouts achieve, you've actually taken a step to separate yourselves from others. Please build on this leadership. Take it with you. Understand that when you look to college, colleges recognize this. They understand what you're capable of because you come with an honor code that is valued everywhere. So recognizing the honor code, recognizing the value structure that goes with it, and the leadership that you now have acquired, I look forward to hearing about the great things that you're going to do. And so please keep in touch with us because I think we'd like to understand more about what you've accomplished, and congratulations. Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, just to echo some of what everybody else has said, you know, we all know and appreciate the hard work that you've put in to get to this level, and you should be very proud of your accomplishments, and I proudly vote yes.
Give the scouts, please, some forward. Mayor, if I might, Mayor Petracco asked me to also offer his congratulations. He would have been here this evening, but it's a special night for his family as his, I guess, middle son is pitching for Nutley High School at the Jackal Stadium, which doesn't happen very often, but he wanted me to congratulate you and tell you how impressed he is with all of your achievements and everything you've done. So with that, please come forward for a photo.
Take a picture with the commissioners. [applause] We'll just wait a minute.
There we go. We lost our crowd again. But we all said nice things.
Commissioner Scarpelli, we have another recognition tonight?
Yes, thank you, deputy mayor, and this is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in recognizing Lincoln School on their 100th anniversary. Very proud to introduce this resolution. The Scarpelli family has four generations that have gone through Lincoln School, me being one of them. And so let me read the resolution. Whereas Lincoln Elementary School will celebrate its centennial anniversary on September 11, 2015. And whereas Lincoln Elementary School was established on September 11, 1915, with a total enrollment of 267 students, and one head teacher, Ethel B. Halick. Whereas the land on which the school now lies, on Harrison Street, was purchased for $5,000. And whereas there have been a total of 10 principals since its inception, five men and five women. Leroy Smith, George Gove, Alice Bickers, Alexander Goldberg, Agnes Kelly, Ralph DeAndrea, Alexander Conrad, Dorothy Much, Cynthia Healy, and Lorraine Rustell. Whereas Lincoln Elementary School has had a profound educational and social impact on its students, as well as the multi-generational families living within the community. Whereas the Board of Commissioners are proud and honored by the many achievements of past and present students, staff, and community members who graced the halls of Lincoln Elementary School and anticipate continued success in the days and years ahead. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey that September 11, 2015, we proclaim the celebration of the 100th year anniversary of Lincoln Elementary School, and congratulate all those in the community, past, present, involved with this historic milestone. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I'd like to say that, you know, the character and success of a school district begins in elementary schools. My son went through Lincoln School, and, you know, the commissioner mentioned in the resolution how the elementary schools, and Lincoln School in particular, in this case, shapes one's character, gives them the ability to excel as they move forward. So, you know, I've always believed and will continue to believe we have a wonderful school district that's moving forward, that's progressing nicely, and the foundation of that school district is right here in our elementary schools, and in particular, tonight, elementary schools. Thank you for your hard work, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, before I vote, I had the honor of attending on Saturday with Mayor Petracco and Commissioner Scarpelli to walk through the halls of Lincoln School. And while I was not an attendee of Lincoln School, just walking through those halls made you want to go to that school. It's very warm, it's very inviting. Principal Rustell is carrying on the tradition. You could see from all the smiling faces and all the excitement in the hallways about all the good things that have happened at Lincoln School, and all the good things that we know will continue to happen there. So congratulations, and I proudly vote yes.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
I will offer my congratulations. Nutley has a wonderful school system, it has great leadership, and I want to acknowledge that our superintendent of schools is here this evening, Mr. Russ Lasavich. So Russ, thank you for your leadership, and we trust that you will make sure that Lincoln School does a great job for another 100 years. We appreciate all that. I vote yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
I just know how you're getting old. Is that at 10 principals in 100 years, I know six of them, so that's too good. Guys, come on. I vote yes. Up and we'll present this.
That's good. Congratulations again. Up to good work. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Sure, get everybody together. Can we get the super chat? How does proof?
Not standing next to the wall, guys. This is not happening.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, very good. Thank you. Commissioner.
Certainly want to thank the Board of Commissioners for honoring the school, and I am the first person to admit that I've had very little to do with the 100 years of success that Lincoln has had. I've been here a brief amount of time, but I did send letters to the members of the committee that put together Saturday's wonderful event and are planning for September to thank them. And in the letter, one of the things I mentioned is there are very few places where you're going to find that much emotion and connection and support for our school system, and that really is, as I said in the letter, what makes Nutley special. So I thank you for recognizing all the different wonderful people and the generations of students that have come out of that building and made a difference. Commissioner Scarpelli, your grandmother?
Grandmother.
And then parents?
My father and uncles.
Father, uncles, you?
Me and my siblings, and my nieces and nephews.
And if you were to just take that line and the contributions that that line alone has made coming from the school to this town alone, you could fill books. So to all of you, thank you so very much, and to Mrs. Rustell and her current leadership. But it's just a really wonderful place, and thank you again for honoring Lincoln School. Hope to see you guys there in September.
Thank you. Would you like to say something as well?
I don't have anything prepared, but I'm honored to be able to represent Lincoln School. As someone who was born and raised in Nutley, I've been through a number of elementary schools, and Lincoln School is truly probably one of the most warm and caring places that I have had the honor to be at. Not only are we looking to educate the children, but we also want them to be kind and caring and tolerant of all different kinds of people and situations, and there's more to students than one thing, and we're trying to instill that in our students. Thank you for honoring us tonight.
Thank you for being here. We'll continue with the meeting. We do not have any ordinance introductions or public hearings tonight. We'll move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution 162-15, on behalf of Mayor Petracco, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for police firearms. Specifications are available in the purchasing department, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. Bids to be received on Wednesday, June 10, 2015, in the Commission Chambers, 3rd floor, Township Hall, Kennedy Drive, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution 163-15, on behalf of Mayor Petracco, whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a collective bargaining agreement with Nutley Dispatchers by IBEW Local 1158, and whereas on May 18, 2015, a memorandum of agreement was reached resolving all issues in dispute, and whereas the Township of Nutley desires to enter into a four-year contract with Dispatchers IBEW Local 1158, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley adopts all terms and conditions pursuant to the memorandum of agreement signed May 18, 2015. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution 162-15, on behalf of Mayor Petracco, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for police firearms. Specifications are available in the purchasing department, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. Bids to be received on Wednesday, June 10, 2015, in the Commission Chambers, 3rd floor, Township Hall, Kennedy Drive, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Resolution 163-15, on behalf of Mayor Petracco, whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a collective bargaining agreement with Nutley Dispatchers by IBEW Local 1158, and whereas on May 18, 2015, a memorandum of agreement was reached resolving all issues in dispute, and whereas the Township of Nutley desires to enter into a four-year contract with Dispatchers IBEW Local 1158, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley adopts all terms and conditions pursuant to the memorandum of agreement signed May 18, 2015. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci, would you like to finish up?
Sure. Whereas the Township of Nutley has the need to acquire support and maintenance of the Township Avaya Communication Manager 6.0 IP phone system, and whereas NJSA 48:11-5F permits the award of contract without bidding for the supply of any services which is a publicly utility subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU, and whereas the proposal from Viper Communications in the amount of $10,800 per year will provide mandatory 24/7, 365-day emergency support and maintenance, and is recommended by the Township's Office of Information Technology Administrator. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is a three-year agreement, and whereas funds are available from account 510-237, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor and township clerk be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into a contract with Viper Communications for the Avaya phone system maintenance throughout the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci, would you like to finish up?
Sure. Whereas the Township of Nutley has the need to acquire support and maintenance of the Township Avaya Communication Manager 6.0 IP phone system, and whereas NJSA 48:11-5F permits the award of contract without bidding for the supply of any services which is a publicly utility subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU, and whereas the proposal from Viper Communications in the amount of $10,800 per year will provide mandatory 24/7, 365-day emergency support and maintenance, and is recommended by the Township's Office of Information Technology Administrator. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is a three-year agreement, and whereas funds are available from account 510-237, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor and township clerk be, and they are hereby authorized, to enter into a contract with Viper Communications for the Avaya phone system maintenance throughout the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Victor Verga was a bus driver with the Department of Parks and Public Property, has requested a leave of absence without pay, and whereas Victor Verga, a part-time employee under the provision of civil service in the state of New Jersey, may receive a leave of absence without pay in accordance with the New Jersey Administrative Code Title 4A: 6-12B, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that this leave be granted from April 1, 2015 to September 30, 2015. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley ordinance 665-22, preservation of trees, states that tree removal permits must be obtained at a cost of $50 per tree, and whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property authorizes a refund for each tree permit submitted upon the planting of a new tree on said property, replacement tree size and species being approved in advance by the Township Forester, and whereas funds will be available from account C-01-904-905, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund the tree permit fee collected as per the shade tree preservation ordinance to Victor J. Prieto, 19 Glendale Street, in the amount of $150 for three trees. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas sealed bids are received for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration service, and purchase of equipment on April 29, 2015, the Township of Nutley, and whereas Advanced Mechanical Corp., 173 Franklin Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, was the low bidder at a service per hour rate of $75, and also for improvements to Kingsland Manor in the amount of $12,700, and also improvements in Town Hall for $6,500, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $30,000, and funds are available from account 508-200 for services contingent upon the adoption of the 2015 budget, and capital accounts 3494K not to exceed $19,200 for purchase at Kingsland Manor and Town Hall have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for plumbing, heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration service, and purchase of equipment be awarded to Advanced Mechanical Corporation. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas sealed bids are received for electrical services on March 25, 2015, in the Township of Nutley, and whereas Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, was the lowest bidder with a rate of per hour rate for foreman of $92.18, an hourly rate for adjournment of $80.85, and an hourly rate for an apprentice of $28.29, and whereas funds are available from account 508-224, again, subject to the adoption of the 2015 budget, not to exceed $40,000, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for electrical services be awarded to Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarpelli, would you like to finish up?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for the 2014 various roadway improvements in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, June 10, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and read. Resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for Park Avenue Improvement, Section 3, in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in Commission Chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, June 10, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and read. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye. Well, I have, mayor.
Thank you. I have my first resolution this evening is, I'm reading on behalf of Mayor Petracco. He gave me a call, and as we noted earlier, he was out with a family event this evening. But he wanted me to convey his full support for this resolution, which I'm about to read. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Joanne Caciulli be appointed municipal judge for the Township of Nutley for the three-year term effective May 15, 2015, through May 15, 2018. So moved. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
of Nutley for the three-year term effective May 15, 2015, through May 15, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayments of property taxes in the amount of $1,981.59 for Block 5901, Lot 30. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the tax collector of this municipality has previously issued tax sale certificates to U.S. Bank Trust for TLCF 2012 ALLC for Block 5401, Lot 13, certificate number 201430 in the amount of $287.99. Whereas the purchaser of the said tax sale certificate has indicated to the tax collector that they have lost or otherwise misplaced the original tax sale certificate and have duly filed the appropriate affidavit of loss with the tax collector, and now therefore be resolved that the tax collector of the municipality be, and is hereby authorized upon receipt of the appropriately executed and notarized loss affidavit, and the payment of a fee of $100 per certificate to issue the appropriate tax sale duplicate certificate to the said purchaser covering this certificate loss as previously described in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 99 of Public Laws of 1997. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, the loss affidavit, be attached to the duplicate certificate to be issued to said purchaser, and that said duplicate certificate shall be stamped or otherwise imprinted upon it the word duplicate as required by law. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Alan, with your permission, the next three resolutions, I can summarize?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. The first resolution, 158-15, is a resolution of the Township Commissioners for the Township of Nutley, which is authorizing a shared services agreement with the City of Clifton concerning the joint consulting services related to the redevelopment of the Hoffen La Roche property, specifically the medical school site, that portion of the property and only that portion of the property. We have previously issued a, adopted a resolution where we appointed Mazer Consulting for a fee not to exceed $12,000, and that this particular resolution is now authorizing the municipality to move forward with completing a shared services arrangement with Clifton to utilize the services of major consulting. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that in accordance with the Act, the Board is hereby authorizes and approves the shared services agreement with the City of Clifton, thereby interala authorizing a contract with Mazer Consulting for joint professional planning, engineering, and consulting services to assist in the redevelopment of the Medical Center Phase located in Nutley and Clifton. Be it further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver said shared service agreement with the City of Clifton on behalf of and in the name of the township, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of its passage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution is 159-15, is a resolution which is authorizing the hiring of the Banker Group for professional services as it relates to the redevelopment aspects of the Hoffen La Roche property itself. They're highly expert in redevelopment areas as well as the negotiation of pilot agreements. So the, I'll read in part. Whereas the scope of such financial impact analysis and related consulting services includes a collaboration with the planning and financial professionals retained by Hackensack University Medical Center and Seton Hall University in preparation of a financial impact statement and analysis of the portion of the HRL redevelopment project consisting mainly of the portion of Block 201, Lot 1, and Block 300, Lot 1, as shown on the official tax map of the Township of Nutley, the Medical Center Phase, and to review and supplement the financial impact analysis of such planning professionals related to the Medical Center Phase for such services provided by the Banker Group LLC at a cost and a contract amount not to exceed $17,500. Whereas the above-mentioned consulting services are required for certain specified professional services to be rendered or performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, that in accordance with the local public contracts law, the Board hereby authorizes and approves a contract with the Banker Group for professional impact analysis and related consulting services relating to the Medical Center Phase of the HRL redevelopment project as described herein at a cost and a contract amount not to exceed $17,500. Be it further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has executed a certification of funds for the contract and that sufficient funds are available for said contract upon adoption of the 2015 budget. Be it further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township. Be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with this resolution, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of its passage. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Just for the record, I'd like to note that I've worked with Mr. Banker and his group for many years, and that there is no one more qualified to provide these services to the Township of Nutley.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
My last resolution for the evening is 160-15. This resolution relates to, you may be familiar with what's going on in the newspaper around COA and the actions that have been taken where the court system now has responsibility to resolve COA arrangements with municipalities. In order to preserve our rights as a municipality, we need to engage the services of a law firm to lead the litigation elements and the court appeal elements related to this obligation. Alan, before I proceed, is there anything further that I should clarify with that?
No, I think that's enough.
All right, thank you. So pursuant to the FHA, the legislature established the Council of Affordable Housing, whose duties include but are not limited to determination of various housing regions of the state of New Jersey, estimation of the present and prospective need for low and moderate income housing at the state, regional and, regional levels, and adoption of criteria and guidelines for municipal determination of present and prospective fair share of housing needs in regions throughout the state pursuant to NJSA 52:27D-307. Whereas in 2000, in, let's see, skip a few years. Whereas in 2015, the Supreme Court eliminated a municipality's administrative protections offered by COA, and currently a municipality's only means of obtaining substantive immunity from bill-to-remy lawsuits is through a declaratory judgment action incorporating second-round methodology, and whereas there exists a need by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley for legal services to prepare declaratory judgment action and provide legal services related to the township's affordable housing requirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that in accordance with the local public contracts law, hereby authorizes and approves the award of a professional services contract to John Inglesino Esquire of the firm of Inglesino Webster. Alan?
Wistis Sala.
Wistis Sala and Taylor pursuant to a non-fair and open process in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 19:44A 20.5, as legal counsel in accordance with a contract for professional services which shall provide that the legal counsel or any attorney on staff shall be paid an hourly rate of $215 an hour for legal services by attorneys and an hourly rate of $100 for services performed by paralegal or law clerks. Further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has executed a certification of funds for the contract and that sufficient funds are available for said contract upon adoption of the 2015 budget. Further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute, seal, and deliver said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township. Further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions shall be placed on file with this resolution, and finally, that a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of passage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes the formal business for the evening. Would anyone like to approach the microphone this evening?
Hello, how are y'all doing? One quick question.
Sorry, could you just stay here?
Oh, Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive.
Thank you.
I went to the New Jersey State Treasurer's Office website, and it lists for the 2015 budget, Nutley Total Formula State Aid, $2,647,630,000. Does the Board of Commissioners know how much our total state aid for 2015 will be? And is this $2,647,000, that number?
That is the number for the municipal, what would they call it, the formula aid? That's that piece of it. That does not include the transitional aid that we receive, which is, would be an additional amount.
And do we know what that additional amount of transitional aid is?
Yes, we have, actually, when we did the public hearing on the budget, we were able to anticipate...
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent, which is roughly $5.2 million.
And do we know when we will get confirmation from the state that we will receive eighty-five percent?
We actually received confirmation from the state that we're going to receive a little bit more than that.
Okay.
We're going to receive $5.5 million, but it's subject to the adoption of the state budget, which takes place on July 1st. So while we are aware of the number for this coming year, we're not adopting our budget until the first meeting in June, awaiting the final approval from the state.
That was my next question. So the Nutley municipal budget will be adopted the first week in June at the June meeting?
Correct, at this point, yes.
And right now, we're anticipating $5.5 million in transitional aid to be split between Nutley, the Board of Ed, and the county, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak before the Board of Commissioners this evening? I think no one?
I just have one statement before Commissioner Scarpelli moves to adjourn. Last Friday evening, we had our ninth Relay for Life event up at DeMuro Park, which started Friday evening and went into early Saturday morning, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the two wonderful co-chair persons for this year's event, Heather Soto and Dana Hess and their committee, which was comprised of Brenda Sherman, Tammy Tribble, Kevin Knight, Tom McEmery, Alan McGill, Deidre Hollywood, Linda Bousset, and Rob Rush, in addition to my park folks, Chrissy Bevere, Linda Hamilton, Mary Fenu, Harry Kirk, Frank DeMayo, and Dominic Azanari, and all of our sponsors, all right, who really stepped up. We are a very special town. What makes us so special is our sense of community, and in doing a little research in, I guess it was An Troy's History of Nutley book, going back to 1895, one of the distinctions that Nutley held was that its citizens volunteered and stepped up whenever there was a need. So from 1895 all the way through 2015, the people may have changed, but the spirit hasn't changed, and I'm very proud to announce that through last year, we raised $775,000 for the American Cancer Society, and so far, at this year's event, the ninth year of Relay, we are at $120,000 and still counting. So I expect to be right around $900,000. And the best part of this is, the applause that we just heard is for all of the people that did all of the work. Relay for Life is not about any one individual, it's not about anyone standing up and receiving accolades for any action, it's a community project, and this community really stepped up, and I think we have distinguished ourselves as one of the leading communities in the state of New Jersey as far as commitment and people and how we stick together and come together to do what's right, not only for Nutley but for the greater community. And for that, I'd just like to thank all of my colleagues here this evening for all of their support on Relay, and Mayor Petracca, who's not here this evening, for all of his efforts, and all of our citizens and all of their friends and relatives that came together to participate to help us fight this deadly disease. So hopefully next year, we're going to be here at our Relay, and I want to invite everyone from now because the work starts, actually, the Relay was over Saturday, the work started on Sunday. We hope in our 10th year to hit that million-dollar mark and really celebrate this township. So thank you, everyone, for everything that you've done, and let's keep up the good work until we finish this fight.
Good luck, congratulations.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
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 Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Time is now 8:39.